Alright, I'm gonna call this public hearing to order, I guess. I've never done this before, so this is a new experience. We're gonna do the pledge of allegiance first.
Again?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, your roll call?
Chairman Keys?
Here.
Commissioner Elwood?
Here.
Commissioner Graves?
Here.
Commissioner Mills?
Absent.
Vice Chair Pittman?
Here.
Secretary Dumas?
Here.
Alright, we have a forum. Just while I'd like to welcome everybody here. Like I said, this is the first time we've done a public hearing, so I'm glad some people showed up. The purpose of this public hearing, Arkansas statutes require that planning commissions hear public comments in a public hearing before planning and zoning regulations can be recommended to the city councils for adoption. The public hearing is for one purpose, to hear comments regarding only the proposed regulations and documents being considered by the city planning commission, the recommendation to the city council for the municipality of Holiday Island. The documents are proposed planning and zoning regulations, the proposed zoning map, and the proposed zoning map table. How this public hearing will be conducted? Public hearings must be conducted in a fair orderly manner so as to allow citizen opinion to be expressed directly to the planning commission that is making zoning policy decisions. Individuals wishing to speak shall approach the podium, state their full name and address, and make their comments. Each speaker will have three minutes to make their comments. If multiple individuals have made similar comments on the same item, then the chairman may limit further similar repeating comments. Individuals who submit documents at the hearing shall identify each document. Each document submitted shall be made a part of the official record of the hearing. Documents submitted prior to the hearing will be provided to the commissioners and be made part of the official record of the hearing. After all comments have been made, the chairman will close the hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, further public comment on this topic will not be entertained. A planning commission meeting follows immediately after closing the public hearing to deliberate on the hearing comments and to consider further action on the topic. No public comments will be accepted on this topic during that meeting. Commissioners may discuss an item and ask questions of the presenters from the public hearing. So, just to kind of reiterate, the topic tonight is the zoning ordinance and the associated maps and tables. We're not here to talk about trash or other sorts of things that may be pertinent. So, with that, I'll open the floor to public comments. Anyone wish to make a comment, you can come to the podium. Boy, this could be the shortest public hearing on record. If no one wants to make a public comment, I do have...
He's gonna do it.
I'll be the first. Ramble Press, and I live at 25 Apache Drive.
Okay.
One thing I noticed in this document you guys reviewed the other day is the term grandfather. It only shows up on page thirty-six. It's not in any of the definitions per se. And I would imagine this term will come up quite a bit because what I'm looking at is a document here that's been put together, a very good document. But we also have an improvement district that has covenants. This document and their covenants do not talk about any of the other documents. Theirs don't address this. This doesn't address their document. In here, according to this document, I can have four chickens. According to the HISID document, covenants, I can have no chickens. So, which of the two are going to take precedence? So, you know, there will be other issues, I'm sure, that will come up in time as to whether it would fall under a grandfather clause or not. I just wanted to bring that to light, that that could be a kitchen to get a...
Okay.
The other thing I was kind of concerned about is painting all of Holiday Island with a broad brush stroke as far as planning and zoning regulations. We have areas that are extremely high density, and then we have areas like I live in that, you know, my neighbors way down the road. So, to put in force certain regulations, I think as a broad brush for everything doesn't necessarily fit. And I can understand down the road, you know, Rome wasn't built today, so things can be tweaked and adjusted as necessary. It's just another thing I'd like to point out that, you know, the community here is for everybody, and it needs to encourage sustainability and foster improvement and people wanting to spend their money on improving their properties and such. I think, I think those were the only things I just wanted to bring up that I saw by reading through this and listening to you, gentlemen and lady. Thank you.
Thank you. Believe me, you are capturing these comments, right?
It's on the recording. I'm making notes, so we can have it for the following meeting.
Yeah, just for everybody's information, when we convene the hearing, we are going to reconvene the planning commission and have a meeting where we can and probably will discuss some of these issues. Anyone else want to make a public comment? Come to the podium.
I'm Stephen Noll, N-O-L-L, Blue Water Circle.
The podium.
The podium's over here.
Over there.
Yeah, the podium.
Stephen, can you repeat your name, please?
Stephen Noll, N-O-L-L, seven Blue Water Circle. Thank you. When Blue Water Circle started in Holiday Island in the seventies, that street was some commercial. Now it's strictly residential. And I'm just wondering what the procedure, what can be done to take it back, to turn it into residential? Because the yearly amendment fee is less, and there's nothing over there commercial anymore. When that was developed, the office was over there, the police department was over there. Now it's strictly private homes and some Airbnbs. So, I'm just getting a comment about that for myself and most of my neighbors here.
Okay. Well, we're not gonna, we're not gonna comment on it here, like I said before. We're here to gather public input, but we'll make a note, and we can bring it up in the next meeting.
And I'll make a note the next time I'm here. I'll come here and still there.
All that, you'll...
All of it.
There's no telling where that, there's no telling where that podium will be the next time.
I'm lucky I made it across the street.
Catherine Bridges, number four, Blue Water Circle. I did not have the opportunity to look at the zoning things that you were gonna talk about tonight. So, my first question is, hopefully I'll manage it. Are we discussing Airbnbs tonight at all?
No. Only, only within the context of what it says in the document.
Can I make a comment about them?
You have three minutes.
I have two and a half now. We live on a very small street, and I brought this up at our meeting a month ago about my concerns about having, at this point, out of eleven structures, we have four that are Airbnbs. And sometimes it's very quiet, and sometimes it's so full of you, we can't park it out in the street ourselves. And it was brought up by one of you, I won't mention which one, that maybe there could be some restriction as to where they're parking because everybody, at this point, on the Airbnbs on my street are all on the street parking. And I just would like to make sure that you commissioners, make sure that you are mindful of people that live there all the time. Four out of eleven structures is a lot for a short street like we have. And I just want you to, hopefully at some point, can discuss the Airbnbs and restrictions. It's a problem in your experience, and it's becoming a problem here. And I have nothing else, I guess, to say, but I've got a couple extra minutes if you want to.
Oh, you got an hour, minute and fifteen seconds. Go ahead. Can you send your dancer?
That's a record for me. But anyway, I don't have anything else to say really other than I just, I'm not the only one. There's, out of the ones that live here and are not part of the Airbnbs, count them with a hand, one, two, three, four, five, six permanent residents. And out of that, we've got four here that are equally as concerned as I am. So, I know you don't want to hear them all say the same thing I've done. Thank you all, I appreciate your time and effort and energy. He's gonna repeat, oh, yeah, just a second.
Hi, my name is Bill Bridges. I live at number four, Blue Water Circle. What I, what I'm asking tonight is, we came to a meeting about a month ago and was told that it's a one-way street, Blue Water Circle is. And we have people going down the wrong way of it. We have people parking on the wrong way of it. And up at the other end of it, there used to be a sign that said it was a one-way street. Well, the one-way street sign got knocked bad, and it hadn't been replaced yet.
Okay, that's not really a subject for, that's not addressing the, you know, the zoning ordinance. That's a problem you need to take up with Iced because they still control the street department and, and the streets and stuff. So, they would be the ones responsible for replacing the sign. So, get with Danny Presley and he'll...
So, Holiday Island don't have control of those streets?
At this point, that's still, that street is still considered a private Iced street.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Ken Rowan. I live on Seven Cypress Point Lane, and I'm also on board commissioners. I want to thank the city council and the mayor for coming up with this, I think it's a fifty-seven page document, is what I've heard, many, many pages. And what my concern is on code violations is businesses run out of home, paint businesses with six trucks on the grass and in the driveway. And I have a very nice home, and these code violations affect my value of my property. If I were to try to sell tomorrow, it would affect it very negatively. One of my neighbors has a greenhouse in the area, and that would be well out in the county. You can buy five acres and put all the greenery you want, but not next to a four-bedroom home. Running businesses out of homes, I think, would be a code violation. Parking RVs in the driveway and building a garage right up to the street, I think is a code violation. So, I'm very glad that you have a code enforcement officer. He lives down the street from me, and I think he'll do a great job. I'm glad you have a building inspector, which the city needs, and we need, really take care of that. But the reason I'm here tonight is to congratulate you on trying to help us preserve our property value. And a lot of it, I mentioned somebody the other day, the covenants have a lot of this in them. The covenants that everybody should have gotten a copy of when they closed on their home. Some title companies don't give them. Some realtors don't give them. But you should have received what the document and the covenants are similar to code enforcement. So, I've seen many people try to make a complaint to Mickey Feinstein and so forth, the planning commission, and they did a good job of trying to write a letter, but it was usually to no avail unless you hire a lawyer or at least five thousand dollars to get this problem cured. So, I hope you will continue. I hope the audience is here tonight to show you what the parking and all the other items that have been brought up are very important to them. They love living here. Hope we've got to make it equal and beneficial for all. So, thank you very much.
Okay.
My name is Kathy Kirk. I live at fifty-six Hickory Lane. And I am, when I purchased this house two years ago, two and a half years ago, it actually came with the extra lot. I had no way of severing that from the purchase of my home. My question is, is I would like to be able to use that lot for, to put a storage building on. And I know that I live in a residential area, and it's supposedly not permitted. But I'd just like to be able to utilize that lot. I do have a building that's behind my first house here on Holiday Island on the property. It is physically impossible for me to get that building behind my house. It's just, there's no way. I've got woods on either side, carport, and it's also boulders and teared down. So, I was just wanting to see if at some point in the future it might be possible to be granted a variance to be able to use my extra lot since I can pay assessments on it and taxes and just be able to use it to benefit me as a storage building. So, that's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else? As I have, one person did drop off something that they wanted read into the record. They apparently couldn't be here tonight. For the length, they should all lubricate first.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Mm-hmm.
I think this is a dangerous precedent. They were able to deliver that here. They could have been at the meeting. It doesn't pertain really to zoning.
Well...
And it's, I mean, these good people came to state their concerns and to let us get off course on, like, red herring is not rightful.
I, this is kind of on the border of whether or not it should be read into the record. I don't know if they could or couldn't be here, but they did ask for it to be read into the record. It pertains to zoning ordinances only in the very broadest of contexts that, that the, in the opening paragraphs of the zoning ordinance, it states that the purpose for zoning regulations is to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens on Holiday Island. And that is the basis, I guess, for this letter here that they want, they want us to make sure that this is considered in that context, I guess. So...
Well, if they go to that to Iced, I mean, as of right now, the city has upped the water system.
Right. But I think it would do more harm than good to not read it into the record. So, I'm gonna go ahead and do what they requested. Notice to the people of Holiday Island and those men and women... First of all, this is from Gina Tate, twenty-five Table Rock Drive. Notice to the people of Holiday Island and those men and women who are making decisions for the people. The people and leaders of Holiday Island have the opportunity to correct the following. An average seventy percent leaking water system for more than two decades. More than ten thousand in electricity cost per month to pump, and more for lifespan reduction of pumps, regulators, and cost of treating water that does not get to homes as well as irrigation for golf courses. Potential for contamination from open water mains. Asbestos cement pipes with potential for putting asbestos into the water as they break from one age. Overpumping on an aquifer that spans fifty miles affects many communities beyond Holiday Island and can permanently damage and reduce its holding capacity and increases the risk of radon and other serious contaminants. As well, as well, one well has been shut down due to radon. Hydrants that are not functional to fight a fire as the pressure is too low to push the recommended gallons per minute to fight a house fire, much less an assisted living commercial fire. ISO rating change that may likely cost all the increase, cost all an increase in property insurance to golf subsidy for Holiday Island. Golf courses is budgeted more than five hundred thousand. See approved budget for 2022. This cost does not include the water for the golf course that appears to be in the water budget. Fellow work, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars is estimated to be spent this year on golf subsidies that less than two percent of the property value property owners use. The past and present men and women of the VOC have made the choice to not slowly replace the water system for more than twenty years and cannot provide minimum fire protection as required by duty and agreement. I keep asking why all of this has occurred. The answer, there is no money, and it can, can't be replaced. This is false. Communities are replacing water systems all over the country, some worse than ours. The money has been available for the past twenty years. There's now six hundred and fifty thousand to come from the tower lease. There's three hundred thousand reserved for the new recreation center. There's water revenue nearly every, there is water revenue nearly every year. Many of us want all of these used for water replacement. We, the people who live in Holiday Island, require that the men and women who act as public servants for Holiday Island do address the public services of water and fire that are not functional for the health and welfare of persons living or using Holiday Island facilities. This is causing harm to the persons who live, own property, and visit Holiday Island as well as harming the land and our water source. We require ordinances to be established that, that align with the Arkansas plumbing code, Arkansas fire prevention, and the Arkansas Health Department's rules pertaining, pertaining to public water systems and be enforced upon the public water system and fire protection services. These ordinances will help to preserve the health and safety of all residents, owners, and visitors and the surrounding communities. We require that these minimum ordinances be enacted and enforced on all public and commonly owned lands, new construction and public facilities. This is the most urgent health and safety need for those who live or visit Holiday Island. We require no further harm to be enacted to the persons who live, visit, or own property in Holiday Island. We do not want more financial harm to persons who currently pay to live in Holiday Island. Therefore, we want to slow, we want a slow process that will not burden owners and residents with costs that cannot be borne. If a home was seriously out of compliance affecting the health and safety of persons, the city would require it to be repaired regardless of finances of the owner. The excuse of there is not money is not an excuse for a homeowner to endanger the health and safety of others, nor should it be Iced. Holiday Island's urban improvement district has funds in cash and property of value. These assets are, that are owned and common by property owners as well as the Libby Daniel Assessment and Benefit Taxes are required to be used for a health emergency and for the most vital need of safe water, of a safe water supply, safe storage, discharge, and adequate fire protection. So, I did as they requested. I read it into the record, even though it has practically no bearing on what we're here to discuss today.
Mr. Mayor, I have a document sent to me or a discussion on telephone that was created and confirmed by the quester that I put it in the record tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
August ten, twenty-two, public hearing documents submitted. It's about the zoning map table, specifically unit block, lot of five, five, one. The property owner is Rebecca Sherman. Her residence is twenty-eight or two eighty-eight Wild Turkey. The first image on this document is a copy of our zoning map table where it shows that in that table we have an address assigned to that unit block, lot of ninety-six State Line Drive. The second image is from the county records where it shows Rebecca Sherman's address to be two eighty-eight Wild Turkey, same mailing address for this unit block and block, unit block and lot. And there's an image from the map that shows Wild Turkey running past, apparently her residence. Her name is on the map, and it shows a driveway. And the nine-one-one administrator for our county has an address, two eighty-eight, assigned to it. So, the request from the property owner is to revise the zoning map table to accurately define the street address for UBL zero zero five oh five oh one to be two eighty-eight Wild Turkey.
Okay. Right, are there any other public comments?
Al Solak, twenty-two Buckskin Lane. I'd just like to suggest that the next time you have a hearing like this and the rules and parameters are set up, that if somebody can submit something, not be present to present it, that they be told they can only have something to be read within three minutes, not five and a half minutes. But I want to be fair to the people that actually take the time and effort to show up for a meeting. Thank you.
Point well taken. I didn't read fast enough.
You would have never made it in three minutes.
Another point about that, that's been all over social media for two, three days.
Well, we're not gonna comment any further on that in this hearing. Like I said, it really has no bearing on what we're here to discuss. So, any further public comments? Otherwise, I will close the hearing. And then, you want to take five minutes and then reconvene the planning commission?
Please. Thank you.
Everyone's welcome to stay. Okay? I'm gonna call the meeting to order for the Holiday Island City Planning Commission meeting for the tenth of August. Weekend dispense with the pledge of allegiance, right? Some of us did it twice already, and everybody did it at least once.
I haven't changed my mind.
So... Roll call?
Chairman Keys?
Here.
Commissioner Elwood?
Here.
Commissioner Graves?
Here.
Commissioner Mills?
Mark, absent.
Vice Chairman Pittman?
Here.
Secretary Dumas?
Here.
Alright, I declare a forum. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Absent the pledge of allegiance?
I move to it first.
Second. Do you have a motion, a second, to approve the agenda? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes of the last regular meeting of the planning commission, when distributed them? Are any comments? Pingers? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve those. Pat will make a motion.
I'm chewing on something. I'll make a motion to...
Pat, one more motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Jerry seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. We have no reports, no old business, so we can move on to new business. Deliberation on public hearing... Deliberation on public hearing comments. So, um, I'm willing to discuss all of them were here. If it pleases the commission. What was the first one that was brought up?
The first was a reference to on page thirty-six, the word grandfather. And comments were, if I got them close, that does not address the declaration of reservations. Our document doesn't do that. And the question was asked, which takes precedence? The declaration or, or the, the ordinances or regulations? And a request or a comment that's not supporting, or we should not have broad brush applications only to the entire community because of this diversity.
Okay. I guess we can all pitch in on the, on the covenants. And we do mention the covenants several times in the, in the ordinance. And basically what we say is, is that we're going to try to, um, to, the city will not be the defender of the covenants. However, because there are legal contracts between the property owners in any particular unit. We, our intent was to codify as closely as possible what we're allowed to codify by law that's contained in the covenants. So, we, we tried very hard to avoid putting something in there that we knew was in the, in direct conflict with the covenants. That's especially true when it comes to classification of, of property, uses of property, which has precedence. The, um, the Supreme, there's a Supreme Court ruling that says that unit covenants have value and therefore a city cannot pass an ordinance that basically invalidates the covenant. And because that would be considered an illegal extraction of value. And in this particular case, the covenants came before the city. Now, if the city had ordinances in place and a developer came in and wanted to build a subdivision and attach a covenant to that subdivision, then it would be on the developers. You know, it would be their responsibility to not be in conflict with the city ordinances. It can always imply stricter restrictions, but they can't, uh, they can't allow things that the city doesn't allow. The, the exception, hobby chickens, I guess, is the one exception that we made and we discussed it at great length. Some of the unit covenants allow, um, you know, pets of all, of all sorts. And, um, and, um, and some don't. Many of the unit covenants don't allow for anything other than typical household pets. But we were kind of caught, you know, between a rock and a hard place. We had a lot of people that wanted to be able to have hobby chickens, especially if they live out in one of the less densely populated areas. And, um, and most, I don't want to say most, but a lot of cities are passing ordinances allowing hobby chickens. You know, raising your own eggs seems to be popular now.
No, we, we, we passed, or included in the ordinance that, that they have to give a, their chicken touch or whatever you call it and approved by the building inspector.
Right.
And if we refer to covenants, I mean, that should enter into whether we approve that.
I don't think that's the way we wrote the ordinance. I don't know. I don't remember the exact wording on how we, I think we just said in a broad stroke that, that hobby chickens are allowed in R-one residential areas. They're not allowed in R-two or multifamily. And, uh, and there's no animals allowed in commercial, um, properties owned commercial, if I remember correctly. But R-one residential, I think we basically said that they're allowed up to four chickens, no roosters. They have to be in a, in a properly designed pen or coop. They can't be free ranging in the backyard, things like that.
So, so the gentleman that brought that up, the remedy he would have would be to get the neighbors to enforce the covenant? I mean, this wasn't stopped in the Supreme Court?
Yeah, because the issue is a conflict between the two.
That's right.
Your covenant is not allowed chickens?
Yeah, I think, I, I'm in twelve, but it doesn't allow chickens. Now, for the record, I don't have any chickens and I'm not planning to get chickens. I just wanted to bring this up because I know it could be a contention down the road.
I think, I think, you know, like you guys are saying, would probably be the way an attorney would look at it. The city is not prohibiting it. However, the property owners can still enforce their unit covenant amongst themselves and prohibit it within their unit.
You could get your neighbors to get together and maybe change the covenant.
Or give you some free eggs. Believe me, we have, we have struggled mightily, not just with this ordinance, but anytime we start, we sit down to pass an ordinance, the first thing we have to do is read the unit covenants because we don't want to create a, a conflict. And it does limit a lot of, you know, what we, we can do. So, but we're trying very hard.
Can I comment on the other part of that, cutting everything with this long brush?
Yeah, sure.
If memory serves me, there were several instances where we talked about property with acreages and green space, that the, the size of outbuildings could be bigger, bigger the lot. So, I mean, I would take a little bit of the exception that cutting everything with a, you know, a broad brush. There's specific instances that you found.
Well, where I'm at, I have bought extra lots and I, I would like to put a small garage on one of them. But the way things are right now, it doesn't look like I'm in favor of that being done. I just know all of Holiday Island is not the same. There's like more rural areas. And then, you know, where my garage would be, you'd never even know it was in there. But, you know, again, we all have to be governed by something.
We, we, we run into that in issuing building permits. That's probably the number one thing that we run into. And the problem with allowing anybody to build a freestanding building on an adjacent lot that they own, that's not an R-one. If it's an R-one residential lot and, and they say, you know, we're going to buy that lot, we'll never sell it, we're going to build a garage on it, we'll never sell it separate from the, from our lot. And so, they build their garage and then two weeks later, they put a for sale sign on the lot with the garage. Somebody buys it and now all of a sudden you have a lot with a garage on it and somebody pulling fifth wheelers in there and using it for a, a workshop to repair their, you know, ATVs or something. So, and we, we're, we're pretty, we're pretty strict about enforcing that even though many times it means that that lot is just going to sit there and never be used.
Well, that's the other thing. If I build a shed there, that increases what I pay in dues and taxes. Uh, where mine is, they have to use my driveway. I mean, the lot on the other side came with the property. But, you know, I, that's where I've come up with a broad brush. There's, there's always exceptions. When I worked with the city of Dallas, Texas, that city is, is got overlays upon overlays upon overlays depending on where you are. And I always had to make sure the neighborhood covenants line up with the city code. And I've been through this, so I understand where you're coming from. But I, I'm just trying to, I guess, help you massage it to where it's, it's more workable for the community that lives here.
For sake of full disclosure, I have a lot next to me that I own. And I would like to see us at some point allow the, I mean, it's a heavy wood block. And, you know, I can clear out space and put a small, uh, uh, extra garage or whatever and nobody from the street see it. And, I mean, we discussed that during this, uh, draft, this one draft.
I remember, I've only been here not quite six years. November will be six years since I moved in to Holiday Island and I'm actually living in my second house, the second house that I bought here. I love it. I remember when there was much discussion in many meetings about us incorporating early on. And it was mixed because we missed something, you know, once everything was presented to judge bar and there was something that needed to be done, what would we do? So, it was kind of tangled for a while. But I specifically remember one of the speakers, and I couldn't tell you who it was because I was new and I didn't know anybody, but they said that if we had, you know, two lots adjacent to each other, that we might be able to have them replatted to be one lot. And that hurt my ears a, because my first house came with a lot next to it too. And that would have given me two and a half acres at that address if it was all one lot. But that would, that would avoid the problem of building a garage on an extra lot and then putting it up for sale two weeks early. You put something on the lot next to it, it's replatted. You can still charge a little bit extra as far as, you know, the assessments go. I wouldn't mind being what I'm paying now if it all be on the lot and I, I have my own.
I, I, that's still on the table, you know? It's not on the top of the stack, probably. But it's still something that's, replotting is something that we really would love to be able to do here in Holiday Island because, you know, it was, it was plotted originally to maximize lot sales, not with any long range plan like we're trying to put together here. No land use plan at, at all, other than how many lots can I possibly squeeze out of this much acreage? And there's a lot of lots that are, that are, you know, will never be built out. Right up the street here, there's probably about twenty lots right next to each other that are thirty feet wide because somebody thought at one time they were going to put a strip mall in there and then they built that up by, on Highway twenty-three. And now those lots sit there. What else can you do with a thirty foot wide lot? Nothing. So, it is, it's still on the, it's still on our planning horizon. But we gotta, we'll probably have to get some lawyers involved to figure out how to, to do it because it would involve the property owners, it would involve ISID, it would involve the county and the city. All would have to come up with a plan that they all agree is, is workable because they're all impacted by, from taxes or assessment or property values or whatever. So, what was the next point?
The presenter was talking about Blue Water Circle is owned commercial and what can be done to change it to residential?
I, I can make a short comment on that. Unit ten is a mess. It, it's, uh, it's, it's zoned commercial, well, in the covenants, it was commercial residential. And that definition, there was no written definition of that that I've ever seen. And so, it's been applied differently over the years. When I read the documents, it, it reads to me, when I read the covenant, it reads to me like the original intent was that if somebody wanted to build a little shop, like if they wanted to have a jewelry store and they wanted living quarters in their store, they could do that, either building living quarters over it or behind it or something like that so that it would be commercial residential. But over the years, again, in order to be able to sell lots or whatever, it got totally re, uh, re-applied to where this lot can be commercial and the one right next to it can be residential and the one behind it can be commercial. The one across the street's going to be residential. And now you have a situation where you have storage units and stuff going up, you know, basically in people's backyards and nobody likes it. So, that also is on our list of things. I, I guess we kind of honored that commercial residential.
That was the comment that I make in our unit block, lot table. Blue Water Circle is at block fourteen and all of those are zone C-one because that's what's in the covenant. So, my input to the question of what can be done, you need to change the covenant.
Well, also.
Get the covenant changed.
Yeah.
Also, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but, um, even if we were to change it to a R-one or R-two or whatever, uh, it wouldn't necessarily change Hi-Sid's classification of it being commercial for the purpose of assessments.
Yeah, that's the other problem.
And that's, that's probably your main problem. That's the problem you want corrected right there.
Right. And, and there are people right now that are living in houses paying a commercial assessment because the lot was rigged, was zoned commercial, but they were allowed to build houses on it. So, it's, I can only define it as a mess.
So, going forward, the mess that we have, if you call it that, is this is zone C-one. So, if anything wants to be done in one of those lots in block fourteen, they'll fall under the regulations of commercial. So, in a standard, it's what can you do in a residential, in a commercial zone that is different than others? And the number one thing is you can't build a house in a commercial zone. So, what this does is stop anything, another residential home from being built in block fourteen. Stops that from happening. Now, it can be changed through the process of a, of asking for the council or the planning commission to change it, suggested the council to adopt it, and also maybe through a variance application in the building permit process.
Would, would anything, would, would anything be bombed by us as we were to change the UBL table to mark those particular lots as R-ones?
Well, we've decided that in the beginning that the map was a map that's pictorial, but the final call is what's in the table. So, if we change ours to be R-one, then it would prevent them to be R-one.
Yeah.
That would be the rules that would follow for land use in that block.
I, I think that at this point, my recommendation would be to, um, to, to use the ordinance as we have it drafted to kind of freeze, you know, the, the, you know, the use of, of unit in time a little bit so that we don't continue to proliferate this mixture of residential and commercial and aggressively look at a, a comprehensive plan for unit, unit ten that defines, you know, how it's going to be developed.
You're right, because just changing those certain lots to R-one is not going to make any difference.
Right.
And then, when we do the VRBO, uh, discussions of what to do with them, that will come into play and cause.
Oh, yeah, that's totally different there.
Yeah, we're going to have to, uh, this variance is there.
The parking situation.
Yeah. Now, you know, the, the issue of traffic was brought up. We really need to, to address that with, with Hi-Sid. We are in, in the, like, to, to Jerry's point, we do address parking and, and bed breakfasts and stuff like that, short-term rentals. We do address parking in the, uh, in this ordinance. I don't have it memorized, so I can't tell you where, where it is in there or what it is. But I know that we did address parking, you know, limiting the number of vehicles that can be parked, where they can be parked, and things like that. So, we're, we're trying to get, to, to get some control over it. And I was going to make one more point about the, the mixture of the commercial and residential. There's also, there's also, um, a section in. There's also, there's also a section in here that deals with commercial that's budding up to residential. In, in that, you know, they, there are some requirements to build fencing, you know, decorative fencing and stuff like that to isolate the commercial from the, from the residential. I'm not sure how that would directly apply to what's already in place out here. But I think we could, you know, maybe make, you know, make some improvements there where, where people are happy with being close to the commercial.
Could you clarify, what do I as a resident in that area do to expedite getting this change to residential? I mean, there's a bunch of different things and I'm not sure what I should do.
To get a change to what?
To the residential and commercial. What, what can I do? You talked about a couple of things and I'm trying to follow. But can you be specific what an individual property owner do at this point right now? Is it go to I C I D, is it, I think?
Can a letter be drafted, drafted that we all sign for the people that live on that street? Send it to whoever?
And who is who?
Yeah, there's one quick thing. The gentleman that used to be in the, in office down there who retired, I don't remember his name. And I came over here one day, brought up this commercial thing to him. And he took, he showed me the net, the map behind his desk and he said, you talk about this section right here? And I said, yes. And he looked right at me and he said, there is nothing over there that is part of commercial. And I said, well, I got these paper here that, that, that commercial price right there. And it comes in words. And he said, there's, and he repeated it. He said, that street over there has never been zoned.
I'd have to go back and, and read it in detail because every, you know, there, there are different, you know, it's kind of like, everything is going to be this, except this lot, this lot, this lot, this lot. It's going to be like this and this lot, this lot, this lot is going to be like this and.
See, I was told, I was told behind those houses over there, that it used to be a parking lot of this street. They were thinking, I had these little stores or something along there and an house and parking lots.
Yeah, I, I don't know that there's anything you can do short term. I mean, you can address the traffic problem by getting what I said.
I, I, I did that and it's happened yet, but I will continue with that. And this is more, my question is, what do we as residents do to get, get a change from commercial to residential? Not necessarily short term right now, but what's our first step?
One thing that could be done, I think, and maybe I'm speaking out of turn here, tell me a plan. Request a reassessment. A mini reassessment that only addresses certain problem areas. I've been asking for that currently. You've got, you've got R threes that should be R ones that are paying higher assessments. There's all sorts of difficulties going on.
I, I don't know that, that bringing I C I D into it is, is the shortest path. The, I'm, I'm thinking, and I, and I, believe me, we're all novices at this. I'm thinking that the property owners could bring a request to the Board of Zoning Adjustment and, which doesn't exist yet, but it's authorized in this ordinance. So, once we pass this ordinance, I will be, I will be authorized to appoint a zoning board of adjustment. And, and I will do that expeditiously. There's a lengthy process in here by which you, which you can request variances and, and conditional uses and things like that and take it to the Board of Adjustment. There's a process defined in here by which they would conduct a public hearing and, and do things like that. But I'm not quite sure right now what the limits of their authority are or is relative to, you know, rezoning something or changing the, the uses. Because I think, like Lynn said, I think it's going to have to be tied into and married with the, the unit covenant. So it, you know, I, I hate to just, just have, tell people to run off in some direction without having the, the, the specific problem really thought through and researched. But Lynn's, to Lynn's point too, the property owners contain, control the covenant. And you can form a committee and get a petition to, you know, to change the covenant to whatever you want it to be. And if you get enough signatures, you take it to the county and they file a petition and it's, and you have a new covenant. It's been done in several units in Holiday Island.
See, I was, I was told by somebody a couple of years ago, and I don't remember who it was. They said this, that section there, this section called section ten. And we would have to have a letter go to everybody in section ten.
Unit ten.
Or unit ten, which is people way up by the family station, so beyond, getting their signature to see if they approve. I was telling our street, only this one section in the residential.
So who do I talk to? Do you, do you tell me anywhere?
I, you know, the unit covenants, nobody in the city is going to help you change the unit covenants. Because we have no responsibility for that. You're a lawyer.
When I bought my house and she bought her house for, you know, my old, for real estate agent, none of us got a letter on the covenant stuff. So like, we're all, we're like, this is all new, most of us on our street.
Right.
None of us got anything like that. So it's, you know, the realtors obviously, you know, they want you to buy the house to get their commission out of it. But they don't tell you, they don't give you this letter or a covenant.
And in, in a lot of cases, the realtors don't know the covenants. They're, they're not experts on the covenants either. The title company is supposed to give you a copy when you close on it. I got, I got a copy when, when I closed.
Mr. Mayor, being a member of the Board of Commissioners, I would suggest, this is the largest crowd I've seen in about a year in, in this room. We usually have three to five at the Board of Commissioners meeting. I think these citizens should bring that up. Our next meeting, we're going to have a workshop, I understand, next Monday, the eighteenth. I'm not sure the, the subject that, that will come up tomorrow on the agenda, but the twenty-fifth, this would be a time to come, come to the podium, just like we did tonight, ask these questions. And we have an attorney, Kim Hutchison, who's a good attorney. And he's dealt with a lot of C I Ds and he's dealt with a lot of these problems. So let the C I D pay the legal fees and get some answers back. So I'm just, just my own opinion.
Who approved that?
I'm not speaking for any of the other people. But like water, you read that long message. The water sewer is not long around this table. It belongs in the C I D meeting, B L C. That's where it's long.
And I think that was my question is, where do I, where is, where do I?
Monday morning, June, August twenty-fifth.
You're, you know, Ken's inviting you to his meeting, so great. However, I will, I, I will award, you know, don't get your hopes up too high. Because the district has nothing to do with the unit covenants. Other than the fact that the unit covenants defines how the property is, is zoned, what it, what it's classified as, and that's the basis for the assessment. The, the, I can tell you how it's been, how it was done over the years. The developer is the one that wrote the unit covenants initially. And as long as the developer was still active here, if the people wanted to, wanted it changed, they would go to him. He would send the letters. He would send the letters to all of the property owners with the recommended changes to the covenant and get their signatures and then, and then change the covenants. There is no such person anymore. In, in my unit, unit eight, before I moved here, a group of property owners got together. They, they, they didn't want duplexes being built anymore in unit eight, A frames or duplexes. So they got together, they formed their own committee, they probably hired a lawyer. And they, they drafted the changes to the, to the covenant. And they carried it around, they carried a petition door to door and got signatures. There was, I think, six or eight people on the, on the committee. If you look at the, if you look at the covenant for unit eight, the very last page was signed by the citizens for, you know, revising the covenant for unit eight or something like that. They call themselves. So that would be a, a starting point if you can get people willing to do the legwork. But it does kind of fall on the property owners to enforce your own covenant or change it to what you think can be enforced.
And I didn't say, it's the twenty-second of August, Monday, not twenty-fifth, twenty-second.
May I just make one comment on the covenants? You can go to holidayisland.us, that's the, the C I D website. And if you dig a little deeper in there, you're going to find flats and covenants. You will find a covenant for your unit.
Yeah. I would suggest, I would suggest getting a lawyer. I lived in Oklahoma where a group tried to change the covenants and and we, we couldn't have, we couldn't have navigated that without an attorney. It wasn't that expensive. One thing we found is that, like, the covenants roll lower unless somebody raised the point to reassess them. And so they go on in perpetuity unless you change them.
And you all appreciate that.
You can, you can vote, you can petition to abandon or to abolish the covenant. You can, I mean, it's a property owner's document. So the property owners can vote to make it go away if they want to.
And yeah, I C I D has nothing to do with the covenants. They don't control them, they have nothing, you know, input to them ever. And they are totally separate thing from I C I D or the city, just so you know.
You know, I, I know from personal experience, having been on the board for five years, that people are perpetually mad at, at I C I D for not enforcing the covenants. And they have no legal authority to nor obligation to enforce the covenants. They, they have nothing to do with them. Okay, next.
You've already covered Catherine's comment about the parking issues and maybe not the noise, but maybe we can talk about that in a corner. A little bit was said about Airbnb's and the zoning use doesn't talk about Airbnb's specifically. That's a separate policy of what created.
As far as regulating them.
Right.
We do say where they're allowed, not allowed.
Right.
But generally speaking, the, the, this zoning ordinance will not put much of a restriction on who can operate a V R B O or a charter and rental. There again, there's been a Supreme Court ruling on that, that pretty much, and there's recent legislation even that, that Arkansas passed in twenty twenty-one that I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that, that kind of says you got to let it happen. And, but you can regulate it from the standpoint of parking and, you know, how many people you can pack into a house and, and stuff like that.
You can impose making commercial or business.
You can, you can make it commercial, you can tax it. So, but like Lynn said, that's, that'll be another regulation.
We are, we are going to have a hearing at some point on that or a workshop.
And Mr. Bridges addressed the one-way street and the problem of the signage, I think we've covered that. Mr. Brown talked about code violations, he listed several about businesses, home-based businesses specifically in his block, a painting business that's on his street, a greenhouse operation, the parking of RVs and garages being built right up next to the street. So I think we have most of that covered in our, in the regulations about home-based businesses and where structures can be built with certain amount of easements and offsets from property lines.
Yeah, I think if you read, it's, paint, I just had, this was the luck, the luck of the year. I flipped it open and it was the right page. If you read page thirty of fifty-three, it's, it covers home-based, home occupation permitted and what the restrictions are. It goes over parking restrictions and stuff like that. So I think we do have some teeth in there about, about dealing with that. And there are things in here about, you know, having, you know, not having greenhouses in front yards. Things covered with tarps and plastic and stuff like that. I think we're, it may not be the total solution to the problem. I think it's taking steps in that direction.
There's one more that pertains to what Kim was talking about. Not more than one truck of not more, of not more than one and one-half ton capacity and no semi-trailers incidental to the home occupation shall be kept on premises, except as allowed by conditional use.
Kathy Kerr commented that she has a lot next door that she wants to build a storage building on it. She understands that there's a need to request a variance and understands it's currently not permitted.
You know, just thirty seconds of history over the years, you know, what, what, what we hear all the time. We get requests for this all the time, every week at least one. And what we hear all the time, when we say, no, you can't do that, they, they say, well, you know, they're all over Holiday Island. They're, you know, unattached garages next door, all over Holiday Island. You know, and that's true. Because over the years, you know, people would do whatever they wanted to and nobody was enforcing the covenants. So yes, there are examples all over. What we did is, we tried to do what the last, the, the last planning commission had a policy, and it wasn't in any covenant or anything, it was just a practice basically, that if you own the lot next door and you wanted to build a garage on it, as long as it was physically attached to your house, then you could, you could do that. The, the, what they like to see is a continuous roof line. So if you built a garage on the lot next door and you had a breezeway connecting the garage to the, to the house with a footing and, and a walkway and everything else, that was, that was deemed acceptable. And there are examples of that where it was done quite nicely. And the, the, the structure that was built had to match the architectural style and everything of what was, you know, the original house and everything. So you will see examples of that. And the terminology that we've used is some inseparable structure. But we haven't limited, limited it to a roof, continuous roof. We would also accept a continuous foundation, a continuous retaining wall or something like that, that, you know, you'd have to convince us that, that it is an inseparable feature that would prevent you from ever being able to sell that, that lot separate from the lot with the house on it. The intent being that you're really not building a garage on the lot next door. You're really building a house on two lots. And we, we have nothing against building a lot, a house on two lots. So. So that's about the only way that we are allowing it right now. And it has given some people heartburn. There's, there's one property owner that wanted to do, to do this. And he had already spent quite a bit of money putting in a retaining wall and bringing the, the level of the, of the lot up to brown level and, or street level. And then he came looking for a building permit to put a garage on it, and we said, no. And, and we told him what conditions he could, you know, apply to that, where he could in fact build that garage. And he said, well, that's not possible because there's a drainage ditch running between my house and, and where I want to put that garage. So, I mean, the answer to him was just no. And that's going to be the answer sometimes.
I might comment too, that where these structures exist in our community that are, don't conform to the regulations, they're considered non-conforming uses. And the document that we have that we're considering tonight includes text in there that if something happens to that non-conforming use, you can't rebuild it and use it for the same non-conforming use. It has to fit the way it's owned. So if a storm takes out a garage that's built on a lot by itself and it's an R1 lot, it probably can't be rebuilt as a garage. So that's in the regulations.
And that's pretty typical of what cities do. I mean, we, we copied a lot of this. Lynn put in thousands of hours of getting this put together. And, and it was done by researching a lot of what other cities had already done. And we came up with what we thought fit our situation the best. Is that it for the comments?
Then we had the comment you read from Regina Tate.
Yeah, we're not going to make any more comments on that.
Okay.
Wasn't relevant.
And then the last one, the last comment was the one that I shared from Rebecca Sherman.
Yes, and I, it, it doesn't take anything. I mean, we'll change the number on the table.
Okay.
It's already changed that we had the county and it's already in Davis Scott that way. However, and this isn't anybody's problem but ours, we, you know, we've had a little bit of an issue trying to figure out who is in fact responsible for assigning street numbers. And the, we came to the conclusion that the 911 coordinator for the county is really the one that assigns the street numbers. And, and the 911 coordinator for the county happens to be the assessor. So she is probably the one that gave this property owner the authority to change her address. And, you know, no harm, no foul, except for the fact that if you look at how that lot should have been, had, should have been addressed logically by starting further up the street and counting houses down or lots down and saying, what should this lot be logically? It should have been 228, not 288. So now, you know, the, the house next door someday is probably going to be 226.
Yeah.
While target, and then it's going to jump to 288. So that to me says that maybe the county assessor is not a person that should be assigning street numbers. But in this particular case, no harm, no foul, so we'll change it on the table.
That's the last comment that I recorded.
Okay, any other comments from the commission? If not, we can move on to the next agenda item, which is considering Resolution HICPC 2022-005. I would entertain a motion that we approve that resolution. And if I get a second, then we'll have Lynn read the resolution.
I'll move that we approve Resolution R22-5.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Jerry seconded it. Lynn, would you read the resolution?
Resolution R22-5, a resolution adopting planning and zoning regulations in order to establish planning and zoning regulations, fees, penalties for violation thereof, for other purposes for the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Whereas pursuant to ACA 1456-415 and following, the Holiday Island City Planning Commission has determined it necessary to develop planning and zoning regulations for the entire area of Holiday Island to provide districts of compatible uses or unified development for the elimination of non-conformance and for other matters of general welfare of the city. And whereas the HICPC has deliberated on proposed planning and zoning regulations during numerous public meetings since November 9th, 2021, whereas the HICPC has, having now developed proposed planning and zoning regulations to adopt and recommend, has provided the required notification pursuant to ACA 1456-422, Section 1C, by letter to the Eureka Springs School Board on Jan. 21st, and pursuant to ACA 1456-422, Section 1B, by publishing a public hearing notice in the Carroll County News, July 26th edition. And whereas pursuant to ACA 1456-422, Section 1A, the HICPC has conducted a public hearing on the matter of adopting and recommending planning and zoning regulations, zoning map, zoning map table on August 10, 2022, to hear public comments. And whereas the HICPC has now finds it to be in the best interest of the citizens of Holiday Island to recommend to the City Council updated text of planning and zoning regulations in its entirety, including the updated zoning map, updated zoning map table to provide for the clarification of terms, uses, procedures of planning and zoning for Holiday Island. Now being resolved by the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, Section 1 pursuant to ACA 1456-422, Section C2, the HICPC adopts the planning and zoning regulations, attachment R22-5-1, the zoning map, attachment R22-5-2, the zoning map table, attachment R22-5-3 for the City of Holiday Island. Section 2 pursuant to ACA 1456-422, Section C3, that HICPC certifies that the adopted and attached planning and zoning regulations, the zoning map and the zoning map table should be adopted by the City Council of Holiday Island. Has approved the state.
Okay.
So for evidence for the publication of the letter, I have a copy with me in the first paragraph reads, but it's addressed to Chris McClung, the school district president. Dear Mr. McClung, pursuant to the code, Holiday Island City Planning Commission is required to notify Eureka Springs School Board that may be affected by pending changes to the zoning regulations of Holiday Island. And then it captures the text from our notice. That was mailed on July 21st to that board president.
And I guess I can only suppose that the reason for that notification is because the school board budget tax base is impacted by, or could be impacted by zoning changes.
It could be that you're going to build a, a missile factory next to a school. They might not like that.
True.
Okay, so a lot of reasons that zoning regulations have to be known by the school.
Is there any other discussion on the resolution? If not, I'll call for a roll call for the yes.
Chairman Keys.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Elwood.
Aye.
Commissioner Graves.
Aye.
Vice Chair Pittman. Secretary Dumas.
Aye.
All in favor?
Okay, the resolution passes and we'll have it on the agenda for the next City Council meeting. Any other public comments? The agenda gives you another three minutes. I personally have not had dinner yet, so.
I just want to know if, because of the configuration of my two lots, would it be possible for me to get the co-enforcement person to come out and kind of take a look and possibly give me some?
If you, if you talk really, really nice to him. He's sitting right there.
The building inspector.
Yeah, the building, building.
Building inspector.
Yeah, and co-enforcement would be someone else. So that would be me. And I don't see anything I can do if, uh, help you then unless you make that property one, one property.
Or unless you can build.
Continue.
Well, that's what I want you to look at because they're very, very often.
Sure.
Is that, put as many lots in there as possible.
We would like to see as many lots put to use as possible, so. But the, the, my concern is long-term, you know, because we can't go, we can't go by somebody just promising they'll never sell that lot with the garage on it. Yeah. Their kids might.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question to ask if the City Council or the Planning and Zoning Commission wanted to grandfather things that have been done in the last 52 years here and allow them to happen, even though it's not allowed in your 57 pages of code.
Like Lynn said, that would be a conditional use or a non-conforming use. It would be officially considered by the city as a non-conforming use. And if it ever, you know, if it, if it burns down, they can't rebuild it.
But there's no provision for us to tell you to tear it down.
Now, there are other things that, I mean, some of the things you mentioned are more applicable to the nuisance ordinance where, you know, you don't get, you know, you don't get a nuisance grandfathered. It was a nuisance then, it's a nuisance now. But.
So if a car is up on blocks and it's in the driveway near my.
That's the nuisance ordinance.
And you could do something about that?
Yeah.
And you will?
Yep. We're, we're still getting our ducks in a row, but, but Aaron Boyd is definitely working on lining our ducks up.
Okay, thank you.
He has told me he's getting lots of emails and phone calls.
Problem is, you know, you got to be ready. If you're going to start knocking on doors and hanging violation notices on people's doorknobs, you got to be ready to back it up. And we're not quite ready to back it up yet. We don't have our, our District Court agreement finalized yet with Eureka Springs. So if we want to take somebody to court, we wouldn't be in a position to do that. That's probably the biggest thing. I mean, there's other minor things like coming up with forms and stuff like that. But the major thing is we got to get our District Court agreements worked out with Eureka Springs and share the District Court expense with them.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question and maybe it's not the proper place to ask it, but in a situation where you have a car up on blocks and type thing, will be, you know, curb going knock on doors and send email and that type thing, are there fines per day or anything to be put in place?
Read the nuisance ordinance, which I'll be sitting website.
I mean, and then my second question is, is these Airbnb's, obviously we're, we're in an area where that's going to happen. Is the city collecting any kind of annual permit to do those?
Yeah.
And should we?
We, we could. Jerry mentioned kind of in passing, because I'd have to look at the calendar. I don't know if we've actually nailed down a date yet. But we want to have a workshop, not a hearing, but a workshop on, on VRVOs. Let everybody come, give us their input. And then we will try to draft some sort of an ordinance on it. And we could tie a, some sort of a lodging tax to that. It's something we'll have to consider as part of that process.
Would any of our care back budgets in any way, shape, or form?
Now, the lodging tax, we are, we are getting off the subject here, but a lodging, a lodging tax is not, is a, is a special tax and it doesn't impact general sales tax. However, there are restrictions on what you can use that money for. It's kind of commonly referred to as a heads and beds tax. So whatever you spend that money on has to promote, you know, that sort of.
Tourism.
Yeah.
Parks.
You know, it's got to be economy driven, economic development driven.
Okay, I'll quit. We have the VRVOs planned for August 18th.
Right.
My next workshop. That's next week.
August 18th. I'm not ready.
Next Thursday.
Oh, Jerry, you ready?
Jerry's the one that's got me ready.
Yeah, me.
And budget. To the workshop.
We need to get a notice right on that, so that people get it in the calendar. Any other comments? Otherwise I'll entertain a motion, I guess we got to go through schedules. Our next break of meetings on the calendar.
It'll be the second Tuesday of August.
We have no special meetings scheduled and the Planning Commission has no workshop scheduled.
September.
All right, motion to adjourn. I'll move. Jerry made a motion.
One second.
Lynn has seconded it. Thought we were really here on that. Any discussion? All the others say aye.
Aye.
Both for adjourn. Thank you for all, thank all of you for coming.